Be honest, I do not live in Wyman'sing. I live in a township. And a township operates differently than borough. So I am less than expert in how a borough operates. Please tell me, what are the duties of a borough mayor? And how do you see yourself fulfilling those duties? And you have one minute.
Well, we have some differences between the two types of government, the local government in Pennsylvania. A mayor under the borough code is responsible principally for the police, overseeing the police department. But having been a part of the elected official group, we serve kind of an advisory position as well. One of the things that I believe I bring to this particular situation is the fact that I have been involved for a while. And there's that proverbial institutional knowledge. People have a tendency to change things. It's always a good idea to know why it was done the other way in the first place. And I think I can bring that to the table and help make sense of what we're going to do, principally the police department.
Do you, as mayor, head the council in their discussions? Are you like the chair? Or is that something that's elected from the...
No, the way Pennsylvania code works is that there are seven members of our borough council that are elected at large. The council then elects its leadership, president, vice president, actually first vice president, second vice president. The mayor is kind of separate from that. So no, I do not lead the meetings, although when we reorganize in January, I am responsible for chairing that particular meeting.
So once a year? No, once every other year. Once every other year. And I'll just note that the... There's an odd number of people on the borough council and you elect approximately half every two years, always in the municipal election. Now, what is it about being mayor that interests you enough to really spend evenings and weekends campaigning for you?
Well, I take it seriously. I mean, this is a... I mean, I've said already that the most fundamental thing about local government is that we are indeed local. We have a great deal to do with people's day-to-day lives. The reality is that... We all are familiar with our real estate tax bills. About 70% of that bill goes to the school district. About 20% to county government. Leaves about 10% to us. For those things, we provide tremendous amount of services to the community. So we need to do it well. We need to do it affordably so that our families can thrive in this community.
If you were describing Wyman'sing to someone, how would you describe it? What would you say has changed over the time you've been involved? And what do you think citizens' priorities are? And we'll take two minutes.
Well, I graduated from Wyman'sing High School. And when I was in junior high school, I had a high school, junior high school, science teacher. By the name of Harry Vanderrod. And he had a catchphrase. He said, "We live in a changing world." And he could have been more right. Things continue to change. But we need to make sure that it's done in concert with how our folks here in this town wish to live their lives. So yes, we have to keep up with things. As you probably all know, we've had extensive redevelopment work over in the old commercial area. Started out as Wyman'sing Industries, began the outlet center of the borough, and now has been repurposed once again into a very exciting office space. And now we have the addition of a medical school. That is a big, big deal. Berks County has long been proud of having five colleges. We all know that. Now we have six. It's that big of a deal. One of my priorities has been for a long time to make sure that we get that passenger train from Redding to Philadelphia which comes over to Wyman'sing. Should start here. We have a connection with Drexel doing the medical school in conjunction with Tower. They have campus here now. And they have one across the street from 30th Street Station in Philadelphia, which is one of those stops. Tower has recently announced that they're going to have an affiliation with Penn. And Penn is next door to Drexel. So I think that in order to fully maximize the impact of that medical school, needs and must come over to Wyman'sing. We will not rest until it does.
Weather is more severe than it used to be. How does this affect the borough? And what do you think can be done about that impact? One minute.
One minute.
Okay, there's extra time if you need to take a...
Do you have any easier questions? Obviously, we're all concerned about climate. If that's changed, how much we can do about it at local level is another question. But there are things. We have entered into a group of concerned municipalities that have shared the watershed. We have up and down the Wyman'sing creek, out to the mountain, in the left of township, as well as along the Talpa Hockin. So we do things within conjunction with them to keep the waters in those creeks clean, to make sure that what we can do possibly to prevent flooding issues and so on. We've worked very closely with our colleagues next door in Spring Township. A lot of water has that rule. It hasn't changed lately. I'm sorry to tell you. Water still flows downhill. And we have had a good bit of water come to our community from others. We work with them to try to keep that under control as best we can.
I'm going to do a follow-up question since there is time. Is the borough's infrastructure prepared to handle the increased flow of water? I'm thinking sewers and things like that. When did they go in?
Well, the borough's not new. I mean, founded in 1906, some of the infrastructure literally goes back that far. We've tried to keep things up to date as time goes by. So that means making sure that there is adequate stormwater retention and to conduct it to the creeks and so on where needed. We have upgraded a lot with infrastructure and replacing the streets and water and sewer and storm sewer things. We've done that, though, not only to protect the environment, but also to make sure that we are in a position to renew that old commercial area which has gone through several changes, as we've said. That was necessary to have it up to speed so that we could attract people and get them to consider locating here. It's not our job to write somebody's business plan. Our job is to provide an environment, a place, that they're willing to invest their money in. I believe we've been very successful with that. We've had almost three-quarters of a billion, that's with a B, dollars of investment in Wyman'sing in our commercial areas over the last 10 or 12 something years. That helps keep taxes affordable for all of us.
What do you see as the big issues on the borough's agenda in the next four years?
More the same. I mean, we have in our borough council chambers two big portraits hanging on the wall. One of Henry Janssen and one of Ferdinand Tune. Those are the guys that founded this place, conducted Wyman'sing Industries. I can't tell you how many times I've looked at those portraits and thought, "Our job is basically, don't screw this up." We have been given something that's extraordinary. We have a very up-to-date, way predating, modern terminology of a mixed-use sort of community, work and play. We have industries, we have businesses, we have all sorts of homes in all sorts of price-guided words. So what we need to do is keep that going. It's a... Sorry to tell an old story, but I've often thought about it. We're born over to Redding Hospital. We buy our first townhouse or semi in the borough. We move on to a smaller single. Then we buy a big single and an even bigger single. We end up going over to Wyman'sing Meadows, then over to the Highlands and down to Coombs. Was that a really good town?
What are the things you most want to accomplish in the next four-year term? Three priorities, guys.
I've already mentioned that train to Philadelphia. I mean, I've been on that bandwagon for a long time. And one of my other endeavors, I've been involved with the Greater Manhattan Chamber of Commerce for a long time and chaired its transportation committee. It's now been folded into a larger unit. But I've been involved in that for many years. It's always been a function of money. There are some interesting bills floating around in DC these days. And one of them's supposed to do some infrastructure things. Maybe we'll finally get it. We have Amtrak interested. We have a new committee formed that includes representatives from both Chester and Montgomery Counties. I think it looks promising to everyone. That's a big change for this entire county, not just for us. Other things, we gotta keep ahead of things. We gotta keep working on that redevelopment work. I'm worried about the Amazon effect on the Berkshire Wall and our other retail centers. I'm worried about the pandemics effect on office spaces, people work from home and things like that. Those are important components because, as I've said before, it's those investments that go a long, long way to repairing the bills so the rest of us can enjoy our parks and recreation, swimming pool, this library and so many other things.
You've talked about a lot of things that are not related to your role as being in charge of the police. So these are unofficial layer things? How would you explain that fetish to us?
Well, the police department is very important. The most fundamental thing that we in municipal government do is public safety. That's firing the police. On the fire side, we entered into an arrangement with Spring Township to share the cost. That's expensive stuff. I mean, you know what it costs to buy a new fire truck these days? It's probably a million bucks. A million, can you imagine? It's extraordinarily expensive thing. And we needed to do it more efficiently. And that arrangement's worked out well. On the police side, I work very closely with our chief. We have a relatively new chief who has come aboard in the past year. Our former chief retired after a long time here. And he has put his roots down now and is working very hard toward creating an atmosphere within the department. Has done some changes with his leadership positions and so on. I feel it's in extremely capable hands. He's a resident of the borough as well. And I look forward to having him serve with us for a long time. So yes, I have those responsibilities, but I think they're in good hands.
A two-part question. Do you...
Is there like a test or something?
Well, we know we like to teach about government. We do these. Do you think the borough provides enough information to its citizens for them to be good participants in government? And do you feel the public has adequate input in borough affairs?
There's never too much information. I think that in large part, our residents think that they are, have the community in good hands. We've done a very good job over the years. We have a very effective financial situation. We have no, zero municipal debt. We have fully funded pension plans. Our tax rate, we believe, is affordable. I think people are generally content. We've done a good job. We continue. And I can tell you in my other life, I'm a real estate broker. At this point in time, my most recent look at Multilist, which was actually just yesterday, there are currently a grand total of 15 homes for sale in the entire borough. I mean, I don't know that I've ever seen it that low. It's an extraordinary thing. It means there's demand for this area. And when you look at the most recent census figures, the borough has grown. In the last 10 years, we gained about 1,000 people. We're yearly 11,500 or so today. And I think that says something very positive about this being a desirable place for people to raise their families.
Going into funding. Municipals got federal stimulus funds because of COVID. How do you think Wyman'sing should spend these funds? And how much money are we talking about?
Well, first of all, we're going to have to find out what we're allowed to spend. The federal government is moving at the approximate speed of a glacier on this. And it's really complicated. And that's not just a political statement. It's complicated because we are under the law required to do our budget for next year. We have to present it to the public and remember it has to then be available for a minimum of 30 days for public scrutiny and then be enacted before the end of the year. So that clock keeps ticking. In the meantime, we still don't know exactly what all those things are. We have an extremely capable finance committee that has done an extraordinary job of some of the things I've already mentioned. I'd have to ask, there's Steve's back there, one of our council members. What's the grand total that they gave us?
$60,000 storage for one year, times two.
So 160 times two.
Five hundred.
560, I'm sorry, times two. It's real money. And there's plenty of things we have in an older community that we believe we're going to be able to use it on. We're still waiting to get the final numbers on that.
Okay. Then we are ready for your closing statement.
No, I just can't work it out for anyone.
I'm changing gears.
Oh, yeah. Thank you for being here. I clearly admit to being a traditionalist. I like this place. I love this community. And that's why I'm participating in our local government. I think it's important that we recognize what has made us what we are in years. Sometimes I get dismayed. Right now, I'm driving the boulevards and I'm seeing political signs. That's nothing that's happened in the past. I think that's a mistake. I fully understand freedom of speech. Don't get me wrong. I'm a believer in the Constitution. But we've always had an understanding. I have been a Republican committee man in the past, not currently, but I have been. And I know that both parties understood that. And it was kind of an understanding. With the high voter turnout in this community, can you imagine what those boulevards would look like if people started putting signs up and down both of them? You know, be awful. And then is it inevitable that we're going to end up with the advertisements for lawn mowing and painting? God wants to clean out your basement. I think we're better than that. So I understand the Constitution. But I also understand what has made this place the community that it's been. And I think things like that are moving in entirely the wrong direction. And we want to make sure that doesn't continue. Thank you, Heather.
There's more? Oh, this is exciting.
And I'll go over the board here.
So, where can the borough cut costs by 5%? Merge with other municipalities such as the fire department? Or combine work, merge departments? Or do you think the borough should? Let me phrase that in an illegal way. Do you think the borough should cut costs by merging with other municipalities and certain departments or by merging departments?
I'd have to say that there's a great deal of difference between controlling costs and cutting costs. I mean, there are certain services that we are expected to do. As I mentioned, only about 10% of your real estate tax goes to borough government. We have responsibilities for fire, police, emergency management. We have responsibilities for water, sewer, streets, plowing snow, picking up leaves, the recreation. This library is a lot of stuff. And when people see things being curtailed, they want to know why. We have, like we demonstrated for a lot of years, that we're able to control those costs. We've done intelligent things. We have, we share a water plant with, that we own along with West Redding and Shillington. We share a sewer plant with West Redding. We have participated in large measure with the Center for Excellence in Local Government at Albright, working with other municipalities. A lot of issues have a tendency to be local, but their solutions are often regional. That would include things, as I've mentioned, but also the fire service, which has worked out spectacularly well. And quite honestly, when we went through the process of hiring a new chief, which we ended up promoting from within, we thought long and hard, is there a better way here? Should we be considering consolidating police services? We took a very hard, thorough look at that with a couple of our neighbors, friends. And we concluded that for us to continue the level of community policing that we're accustomed to, that we were better off staying alone. That's not to say we wouldn't consider such a thing again in the future. But I'm doubtful that we would ever see it. So yes, there's lots of things like that that we're willing to consider. If any of you have good ideas, please pick up the phone. We need your help and input as well.
I have one other question for mayoral candidates. And that is on funding for the police department. And is it appropriate? And they wanted to know what candidate's position on that funding issue. I think they're talking about police services versus social services.
Our overall borough budget is about 21 million bucks a year. It pretty much is. The police budget is about 2.8, I think, something less than 3. I think we get excellent service for those dollars. There's an awful lot of ongoing training, constantly renewing equipment. There's been a move over the last years and through the generosity of some of your neighbors, some residents of the borough are helping in this effort, which is a wonderful thing and much appreciated. We are going to the body cams for the officers as well as car mounted issues. I mentioned how much it costs to buy a fire truck. Police cars are in tribute or leaving. We have a lot of things like that that we look very carefully at. Our borough revenue comes not just from that real estate tax, but then we also enjoy a share of the real estate transfer tax. We have mercantile taxes, but we all know how that's been under assault with internet and so on, as well as our income taxes. So we put that all together, take an awfully hard look at it. Again, as I said earlier, we can't, I can't thank our finance committee enough. I graduated from Penn State with a 2.15, so believe me. I'm not the arithmetic guy. I have some that are really good. And I can't tell you how much I value their input.
Thank you.
Thank you.
And before we start our forum, if you wanted to join the audience, you may.
Yeah, actually, that's why I can stay far enough from the council.
But please do a remax.
Yes.
Before we start our forum with the candidates for council, I wanted to remind you that the election is Tuesday, November 2nd. And polls are open from 7:00 in the morning till 8:00 at night. If you have opted for a mail-in ballot, it may be mailed with one first-class stamp and the county will pay any postage due. I know several people who've always sent theirs in and they've already gotten the notification that it has received. But I'm going to encourage you to mail it at least a week before the election to make sure it's delivered on time. It may be placed also in the secured drop boxes at the county courthouse or agricultural center and copy the sheet that has the times that a closer opened, so you know when you can drop it off. And there is also a law in Pennsylvania that you can't take anyone else's ballot with you. If there is someone who is not able to take their own ballot and you want to take it for them, they need to fill out an affidavit. So we copied that in Spanish and English. And all you need to do is give them that. The person bringing the ballot fills out part of it. The person whose ballot it is fills out part of it. And then you can drop off someone else's ballot. And that's especially important if you have splitting with someone elderly who cannot get out herself. Let's see. If you have questions on the other offices on your ballot, and we did print a sheet that shows most of those, not all. You're all also voting on constables, judges of elections and elections inspectors, and we didn't cover those. But the league has a nonpartisan website, vote411.org. And all you need to do is type in your address and you will learn about almost all the candidates on your ballot, with the exception of those that are at the bottom of the ballot. And the library can help you with that if you have any questions. So if the candidates are ready, we'll be here.
Good evening. It's nice to see so many friends here. And also, I appreciate the opportunity to introduce myself to people who don't know me. I'm Jenna Barnett. My husband, our son and I moved to Wyman'sing in 1994. Will was a Spartan from his first day of kindergarten until he graduated with a class of 007. And while he was in school, I served on the school board for eight years. In addition to being a wife and mother, I'm an attorney. I have an office in Berkshire Heights as well as an office in my home. I primarily deal with people in crises. People going through divorce, struggling over custody of their children, questions about workplace issues, wondering who should make decisions for them when they're ill, wondering what to do with their estate when they die. A real people. So the reason I'm running for borough council is to make sure the borough councils' priorities are the people's priorities. Make sure that we keep that in mind whenever we make a decision. What does the community need and how can we serve them?
Thank you. Mr. Jayce, if you may.
Good evening, everyone. And thank you for being here and having an interest in our government. Since I'm on the clock, I'm going to get right to it. Four years ago, because I saw a need for genuine resident senate representation, I ran a successful write-in campaign. I thought I could make a difference in the community that I love and the borough that I was born in. During my first time as your council member, I've been very active and upon the great lengths to be attentive to the needs of the borough and the residents and neighbors. I have actively solicited constituent input. And when presented with a concern of a resident, I worked hard to address those issues in a timely manner. And I have always been thanked for that. And that is very gratifying. Not bad. In an era of extreme political polarization, I am neither political nor polarized. My responsibility, my philosophy of government are not Republican issues. They are not Democratic issues. They are purely Wyman'sing issues. And I am honored to serve. That is why I am seeking a second term as your council member. Thank you.
Hi, everyone. It's really exciting to see you all simultaneously. Terrified because I don't learn to speak in public. If you don't know me, my name is Jen Reimer. My husband and I moved into Wyman'sing in 2007. We both relocated here to Berks County in '99 and found our sort of forever home here in the hills in '07. We have a 10-year-old daughter who's in her sixth year in the district, her first year over at REC, which is exciting. And I also substitute in the district. I'm here running for office because I want to bring a new perspective to council. I want to represent our community as a woman, as a Hills resident and as a parent with a young child in the district. I'm the next generation of Wyman'sing parents, raising kids in the borough and in the district. And the demographic of the borough is changing. Younger families are moving in. And I think we need some fresh eyes to help make sure the borough is keeping up with the changing times. Thank you all for coming. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, everyone, for being here. I'm going to remain seated if you don't mind. My name's Fred Mogul. I've been a resident of Wyman'sing for 60-plus years and live here with my wife across from the high school. And I've been practicing attorney for 41 years. Have run law firm, which is the oldest law firm in Berks County, coming in about 152 years, tracing its history back. And I also practice with Janet Barnett from time to time in family law. Also have done municipal law, representing municipalities, planning, zoning from both sides of the table, from the municipal side and from the developer side. And I believe with my background and basically as a small business owner and a practicing attorney with municipal experience, I can add a unique skill set to make borough council even better than it is. Thank you.
Let's start. Thank you for having me today. My name is Jaflyn Torres. I've been a resident of the Wyman'sing area for over 30 years and attended the Wyman'sing school district from kindergarten to graduation. I've worked for and owned businesses in our community as well as raised my children and included them in the Wyman'sing school district. My professional background includes entrepreneurship, finance and teaching. My objective for running is to provide our community with leadership that reflects our residents and as a woman who advocates for equality, safety and transparency. And I also have a family which not only represents diverse ethnic backgrounds, but also one that includes special needs. This is going to enable me to provide our borough with an enhanced perspective and one that will represent all of us. As for Katie Maher, she sends her regrets, and she is unable to attend this evening, but would like to express her full support and confidence behind myself, Jen Reimer, and Jan Barnett that these candidates will support and positively impact the Wyomissing community.
Thank you. Mr. Stanko.
Good evening, everyone. My name is Ron Stanko. My wife and I have lived here for forty years. A lot of the time I've spent away. I was president of Puma USA for several years. We have four children, have attended school in Wyomissing as well as Holy Name. More importantly, they've been in every sport that Wyomissing has to offer for several years. I've been involved sort of as a shadow borough council member in recreation because I've headed up the baseball operation here for the last thirty years. I venture to say that anyone in this community that has children who play baseball, I coached them at some point, and not once did a parent yell at me for not playing their tennis. I played as mayor. I was mayor at one time. During my time as mayor, things took place like the shops, Viva, the Park Road apartment building. I'm in this community to stay, and I love this community, and it means a lot. So I'd like to be elected for council. Thank you.
Mr. Paisley.
Hello, folks. My name is Shane Paisley. Together with my wife, Jeanette, who's in the audience, we're raising our family here in Wyomissing. What motivates me to run for council is, as a new running councilman, respected councilman, I really try to do things the old-fashioned way. Many of you might have seen me on your front stoop out campaigning here. So instead of sending a bunch of mail to the people's mailbox, I really wanted to make sure I got out and I got the pulse of the community. And I can certainly tell you that right now, from what I'm understanding from the folks that I've visited or campaigned with, that Wyomissing currently is indeed an advocate. And a community advocate, somebody to hear the people's voice, and somebody that can help or propel positive lasting change instead of temporary fixes. And through something called inclusive community engagement, where the community gets a loud voice and a real honest-to-God seat at the decision-making table. And I also believe that currently what we need to do is we need to make sure that we're having new engaged leaders that are coming to the community that despite politics will come together to solve our challenges and pursue opportunities and problems.
Now, we did learn from Mr. Levering that official designation of working with the police, that he also does other things. So according to the borough secretary, the job of a council member is to pass ordinances and resolutions. So we would like your view of what you will actually be doing and how you plan to fill the role of a council member. Start with Mr. James.
Well, Fred alluded to... I forgot before. As Fred alluded to before, our council runs many different areas. Under the state code, we are able to have committees, okay? I currently chair the Fire and Police Committee. I also chair Refuge and Recycling Committee, where we made great strides in those areas. But we work on a committee of people, both council, elected officials, and residents in a lot of our committees, such as Park and Shade Tree, which I also own, and as well as infrastructure. So these avenues that we have input with, then we collectively make a decision, how to proceed, and then we take that to all of council for their final decision.
Thank you. Ms. Reimer.
Since I decided to run for council back in March, I decided that I needed to know what was going on. So since March, the last eight months, I have attended ninety to ninety-five percent of all of the council and committee meetings. I want to know what's actually going on. Yes, the council proves everything, but all the decisions that are made run through all of our different committees. There's nine of them. Infrastructure, development, we have Shade Tree, REC. And I have attended each one of those meetings. The only ones I don't attend are personnel because they're usually executive sessions and I can't sit there. But I've really gotten a pulse on what the borough does, what the committees do, and how they interact. And I have ideas on all of the different fronts and what we can do with them. Yeah, thank you.
Passing resolutions and ordinances is the final product. That's the toothpaste coming out of the tooth. What any municipality does is they rely on input from the community and input from their professionals that they hire, the professional engineers, solicitors, and also studies and things that they get and review at the various committee meetings. So what I plan to do is to use some of my past experience and try to be on planning and be involved in some of the committees that I have a background in and I think I can add value to. And then only then, once you get all that background and you get some coalition or coalescing of thoughts by all the council, it's not just one who does this. It has to be a majority, and it's usually a vast majority passing these things. Then you pass ordinances.
Ms. Torres.
I have plenty of ideas. And speaking with residents, bringing up advocacy is our major concern. Being an advocate for our residents and being able to decide what is best for our community as a whole. And, you know, how the representation matters. And I think that the safety of the community is dependent on representing and advocating for what our needs are in our community. So I think that all while keeping a balanced budget is what's necessary to be more.
Ms. Stanko.
Thank you. My father used to tell me, hey, if it ain't broke, don't fix it. So we've got a great community here. I would say a few things that have been on my mind, and as I've gotten older, they've become more serious. One is transportation in the borough. If you don't go to Pocono Raceway, maybe you could hit the boulevards sometime in the morning or the evening. Or they'll hit you. Secondly, our recreation department is good, but it could be great. And it could be great if we were able to have a summit meeting between the school board and the borough so that we utilize all the open space that's now devoted to school district institutional use. And it's very difficult to make that happen for all of us. We obviously have great athletes, but it's a heck of a thing to try to get them to practice with all the field problems. So that's my goal is to do pretty much what I've done for years, which stay involved in kids because kids eventually are going to be the parents around here, and the parents are here because they think this is a great place. And I couldn't agree more.
Thanks, Judith. Yeah, we tend to focus a lot more on resolutions and ordinances because they're the final product. It's what shows up in the minutes and what gets conveyed to the community. However, the more guesswork that needs to be done by council happens only because we're not necessarily wrapping our arms around the community. We're not bringing them inside, giving them a loud voice, giving them a seat at that decision-making table. So what we really need to do is make sure that we're identifying the correct issues, problems from the get-go so that we can be more effective when we're providing the solutions to these particular types of issues. So those are some of the things that I'll fight for is to increase procedures in that particular area so that we can be more informed as a council and we can make decisions that are really adept to the community.
We need to have clear priorities. And we need to make sure that our balanced budget reflects the priorities that we have. We also need to make sure that information is available to the communities. I don't know how many of you have gone to the website and tried to find minutes of a committee meeting. Lots of luck. It shouldn't be difficult. You should have that because that's where the work is done. Because borough council at the Tuesday meeting is approving what's done at the committee meetings. What's done at the committee meetings is the most important thing that goes on, but that information is not readily available to the public. It needs to be more accessible so that you all know what's being discussed and you all can give your input to the borough council people. We also need to ask questions. Why are the trees... Why are so many people's homes being damaged by the trees? Do we have adequate staff to prune the trees? Are we planting the right trees? Do they need to be that high? Do they need to be shorter? So we need to ask questions.
I'm going to note that I was looking for those committee meetings. Could not find minutes of the committees. I also could not find the borough budget and our financial statement. I even went to the State Department of Community Affairs to try to find the financial, the less audit and financial statement and could not find it there. So I think this is an issue that will need to be addressed. We've had some questions from voters. So let me give this one, and I think we're starting with Ms. Reimer. Do you think discrimination, whether due to race, gender, or sexual orientation, exists in our community? And what policies and procedures would you want to put in place if this is a issue?
Yes, it exists in our community. It exists in every community throughout the United States. It is built into our system, and it's not any individual. It's not anyone's fault, per se. But it is a fabric of our society. As a borough and as a community, I think we need to support anti-racism on all fronts. Race, gender, ethnicity. We need to commit to supporting it. We are not accessible if we cannot entrust it. Our boroughs fool people from all walks of life, and we need them to feel safe within our community. And the way to do that is to share the information that we are not only not racist individuals and not biased individuals, but that we are against that on all fronts. And it will not happen within our government, within our police force, or within our community.
Ms. Mogul.
Thank you, Judith. I also echo Ms. Reimer. I do believe that discrimination exists. I do believe that it's something that's on the forefront now, but if you look at it historically, it has lessened over time. But it's not gone. And we need, as councilmen, we need to be sensitive to it in our policies, and we need to be sensitive to it in our hiring. And I believe with the police interaction with the community. So that is something that can be very easily woven into the procedures that the council would be able to utilize for hiring and police-type activities and things of that nature.
Ms. Torres.
Yes, racism exists. Acknowledgement of these issues and a plan to, of action to move forward is what is necessary. It's what they'll look like. Adding ordinances and education to the community, possible advocacy and awareness training provided for workers, residents, and businesses. Adding committees for these issues to add appropriate representation and to hold our community accountable. I also believe it's a leader's responsibility to stand up and oppose any type of discrimination and put out public statements and lead by example.
Ms. Stanko.
For anyone to say racism and discrimination doesn't exist, they'd just be fooling themselves. But if you grew up as a German immigrant's son who couldn't learn to speak German because they were afraid of a Nazi sympathizer, we all have experienced this kind of stuff that was out there, and it's still going on. But one thing we need to look at in Wyomissing is look at the Wyomissing School District. The Wyomissing School District has transformed itself over the last fifty years into a homogenized, equal-opportunity school. And everyone is still performing at the highest level. So there are things we do, generally speaking, without having to make something bigger than it needs to be because everyone in this room probably has a little bit of something that they don't like. But we work together here, and that's why this community hasn't been affected like Portland and Seattle and some of the other communities because we try to make things good for people. People say this is a Norman-Rockwell community. We want it to be a Norman-Rockwell community for everyone, and I think we do a great job on that. And kudos to the school district who's been able to take this issue and sort of kill it in its infancy.
Mr. Paisley.
Yes, unfortunately, racism is certainly alive and well in today's societies. However, it could be all of our jobs here in Wyomissing to make sure that we stamp that out. I do agree, as Ron said, with regard to the fact of many times it really starts with the kids. But making sure that we bring in the appropriate educational and training classes and things of that nature by those individuals qualified to teach that subject. And making sure that we're celebrating our cultural differences here. Wyomissing has actually, as somebody had once stated previously, the demographic is changing. And it's time we wrap our arms around our changing culture and demographics and carry that forth with that thought in how we lead council.
Discrimination doesn't exist. And the first step is to recognize that we have preconceived ideas about different groups of people. Unless until we recognize that each of us has some preconceived ideas, we are not going to be a more open society and we're not going to be able to take advantage of everything that diverse groups offer to us. We need to make it safe for people to express concerns about discrimination, whether they've felt it, whether they've observed it. We also need to have a safe place to discuss it because I think if people were more able to discuss it in not a very, in not a defensive way, we'd have a better understanding of different people's perspectives. And I think that would reduce a lot of detention that people have because they're afraid that they're being dis... They assume they're being discriminated against when there might be entirely different things going on. We need to be able to follow each other and be vulnerable in those conversations.
Mr. Paisley.
Well, that was tough because I agree with everyone who's been saying. But, you know, on a very serious note, I've been faced with racism. Every council member has. Because we have a certain individual who comes every council meeting, every committee meeting, calls us racist, biased, xenophobic because we don't agree with him on a particular thing. Or we want to do something different. We are getting chastised for it. So currently, all of council is experiencing this on a monthly basis. That's all. Oh, one other point on that. We've been accused of our police department not being diverse. We have females. We have Hispanics. We just hired a new black officer. So our police department is very diverse. Thank you.
There have been several questions that are geared toward one set of candidates or another, and I'm ignoring those because we said we wanted them to be answered by everybody. But I turned this one around so we can be. There has been a lot of, shall we say, siding in this. As much as none of us may like it, that exists. So if different people are elected and it's not all the people who know each other, how will you work to make the council work as a whole? And we start with Mr. Mogul.
Thank you. The way council works and the way that I've seen other municipalities work is there has to be a coalescing of ideas and there has to be some unity. And it may be not unity of party or political belief or ideological belief, but unity towards what's best for the community. And I believe that it's important for each one here to acknowledge that and to agree to strive towards that goal. Remember, it takes at least four votes and more to get ideas across, get resolutions passed, ordinances passed. So you've got to work together. It's just that simple.
I'm here a little bit about what he has mentioned. But experiences, everybody has different experiences. I think that we all are in agreement about unifying and coming together. I think that in this day and age, it's the most important thing, and it's vital for us to put differences aside and work together to progress forward with our community and decide what's best for the residents. It's a non-political issue. It's more of an issue of morality and coming together and siding on the right side, which is for our community.
Mr. Stanko.
I would say that with the seven members of council and the mayor's steady hand to move the ship, we have debates and long-winded sometimes to work through issues. And that's what's called a democracy. And we try to do things for the best of the community. And I'll take that sentence and just say something I've said before, which is in the last several years, I've spent a ton of time going throughout Pennsylvania, other states, with the police departments. I tell you, the Wyomissing Police Department is one of the best police departments to be in the entire state of Pennsylvania. We've trained a lot of those guys and women, and they just really are super. And it's kudos to the borough for hiring the right people in the right job. So thank you.
Mr. Paisley.
Thanks, Judith. Yeah, I'll go ahead and not to say it. I mean, I'm tired of politics, and I think that everybody else is too. You know, I have a twenty-year track record working with large companies and creating multi-functional teams, transcend global boundaries, political ideologies... political ideologies, cultural ideologies. Let politics get in the way. And I think whatever we have to, instead what we need to do is make sure that we're creating a forum where we can have differences and different perspectives and have those be celebrated. And yet, at the end of the day, we filter them down through the decision-making process where we can actually come together for the benefit of the community and implement those changes.
During my eight years on school board, I don't know of a single time when politics mattered. I don't know of a single time when we had a vote along party lines where there are issues that were important to one group but not another. We successfully worked together toward common goals, which was improving the community. What we need, what we need to do is encourage people to speak up. There's very little said during the committee meetings that I've attended. And we need to encourage people to share their points of view, to explain what they're bringing to the table, what they're hearing from the community, so we can exchange ideas and bring out the best. But that's not a poll, that's not a party issue. It's an issue of being willing to share information, exchange ideas, and be open.
Thank you.
It's all about teamwork. And I was kind of surprised by some of the comments, actually. You know, because, and Mrs. Jody Bennett is in the room tonight, I believe, I thought I saw her. But, you know, here is a female from the Hills who we appointed without knowing her political party, okay? Didn't want to know. We knew she was qualified, so we asked her if she'd join us on council. When it came time for her to run for two years, I said, "Jody, give me your petition to sign it." She said, "Oh, you can't sign it? I'm a Democrat." That was the first time we knew about it. So politics does not get into the Borough Hall council chambers. And I was appalled when their own party didn't endorse her.
Partisan has become, partisanship has become very black and white lately. And it's absolutely not something that we need here in our local community. I will agree with Jenks on the fact that it was a poor decision to bring four women on and take the one female Hills resident that we have. I really thought she was going to make it through anyway. I voted for her. And unfortunately, she's not here. So I am here as a female living in the Hills to hopefully be your council member. I have worked on several boards with groups of people of different beliefs. And we've all gotten along great. It's not about us versus them. It feels very much that way this year because this is the first time in many, many, many years that there has been a fight for Borough Council. Usually, when there's four seats, there's four men running. When there's three seats, there are three men running. This is, this is a fascinating and new turn of events for Y Missing, to have eight people here running for four seats. And it is a sign of the changing times. We have a new demographic. People want to be involved in local government. They realize that local government is what impacts us the most.
And with that, we're ready for our next question from the audience. What would you do to improve communication? What, no, you stop. What would you do to improve communication to the community from Borough Council and its committees about their meetings, proposals, and decisions? And I'm going to add the word timely to that because too often, people learn after the fact that there was a meeting and they didn't get their input back. So what can you do as Borough Council members to see people get that information when there is time for them to think it through, time for them to respond before decisions are made? And we start this time with Mr. Ryska.
Thank you. So technology is an extremely effective tool that can be used to increase communication with our community and with businesses and residents here, including additional options like apps and more effective and informative websites will ultimately benefit everyone and provide an easy transition in informing the community of resolving issues that may arise. Also giving more people an opportunity to be involved in Borough meetings and continuing to provide recorded versions so others have the opportunity to be part of them.
Mr. Stanko.
There's no question that we could flood every one of their computers to the point they would blow up with the information that would come from Borough Council. With all the committees and meetings and the conversations that take place hours after hour, all of that can be recorded, transcribed, and put on the website. And frankly, it might be good reading. They'd be there and would solve the problem of not getting information. Maybe that's something we need to do. But when they produce the bill to make it happen, that may be another story. I think there is a need for having easier access to the Borough ordinances. Maybe that, because I myself is having trouble finding things. But there's ways to do that. And I don't think a person has ever been on Borough Council and has said, "We're not going to let these people see anything or let them read anything." It's just been one of those things they didn't get to yet. So that should be an easy fix.
Mr. Page.
Thanks, Judith. Yeah, it really shouldn't be so hard to get the information they need, right? I mean, really, that's the crux of the situation. You know, we don't have to agree with them, right? I mean, you can lead the horse to the water, but you can't make it drink. This is some of the stuff that I heard when I was out campaigning in the community, is that we have residents that really want to be involved. And then we have residents that don't want to, not so much, right? So this is more of a matter of the local infrastructure around those people who want to be involved and want to get the information. And yes, using some digital tools so that we have easier access to information that we need. And also maybe some more traditional avenues, like town hall meetings and in-person forums and things of that nature to really get at the present community, right? I mean, this is really, we focus a whole lot about, you know, economic development. But we don't really talk a whole lot about balancing the needs and wants of the community. Part of the thing that we need to do here is say with the folks, I call it inclusive community engagement. And those are establishing those mechanisms so that we can make sure that the folks that want to be involved can get involved and have that experience.
I think we can use our website in a number of better ways. As I've talked about before, post the minutes that have been approved from different committee meetings so you actually know what's being discussed and what's being decided and who voted on what. If you, we should update the Borough website so that when you go to see what meetings there are, you don't have, you don't have to scroll through a dozen or two dozen meetings which already have held to find out what meeting is, next meeting that's going to be held. We can use text messages. Many of you probably, like I, can get text messages if there's going to be, Red Newark's going to be blocked off from one race or another. We can use text messages to remind people that the following day, your block is going to be swept. Please move your cars. Or the following day, when we expect a certain amount of snow, please park someplace else. But we could be, we should be able to do this on a neighborhood basis so we can focus on the groups that need to be reminded to do certain things so the streets are cleaner. We can use technology and stop using Facebook, please. Let's use our website better.
I am far from a website person. My wife, Ricky, will attest to that. Yeah, the website certainly can always be approved. Generally, you mentioned, you know, getting the red alert notices, and that's what they're called, about a street being closed or whatever the situation is. But that only happens to people who register for that. People who register on the Borough website receive information almost daily about what's going on. They receive information about meetings when those are going on. But the first step has to be the public. They need to register with the Borough Hall to get that information. Just don't go on the website and hope to find it. Yes, all the meetings are listed there. All the meetings are published in the newspaper as well as the paper will publish them. But it's still, you know, legally, we have to do that. The Borough Citizen, another fine publication, okay? It explains who everybody is. Their comment was made, nobody knows who the council people are. Well, you know, they're on the webpage. They're all listed here. If somebody really wants to know who their council members are, it's listed there. We don't keep it a secret. Thank you.
We, we have two questions.
I haven't had a chance.
Oh, I'm sorry. I knew I got confused at some point tonight.
It's okay. As far as communication in this borough, this is my big gripe. I think it is hugely lacking. We don't use, utilize social media outlets nearly as efficiently as we can. And our website is difficult to navigate. It is not visually appealing and it is incredibly outdated. For example, our visitor section on the website, when you click over there, it has a little bit of information for our visitors about where to shop and where to dine. The number one place we've listed to shop is the Berkshire Mall, which is not what I would recommend we tell them, our visitors, to go to at this point in time. For our dining list, we have Old Country Buffet, The Tilted Kilt, Wayback Burger, Sweet Crawl. They're all listed as locations that our visitors can go and dine at. This is an example of the website just not being kept up to date. The website does not list committee minute, meat minute, committee meeting minutes. It only lists council meeting minutes. This is another way we can get information. The lack of attention to detail with our website and with us getting information out leads me to believe that information sharing residents, visitors, potential businesses, and families trying to relocate here is of little concern to the borough at that point. And that really frustrates me. I want us to be able to work with you and you to know what we have to offer.
Mr. Monge.
Thank you. I believe that the technology that we have available to us can easily correct these problems. It's just a matter of focusing on them or getting a committee together to get recommendations from people who know more about IT than I do or Mr. Jenks does. You know, the, I get those notices. I register. I know when there's a committee meeting. I know when it's canceled. I know when it's generally not too. It's easy to do. I get it. They tell me about my trash collections. They tell me they're going to be late and they apologize. So I, you know, apps. I think we could do an app. We could do better on our website. You need a webmaster who keeps it up to date all the time. It's just a focus that we may have to change the priority. And then most recently, I think as recently as August, the Sunshine Act, which is an act of transparency, which is a term used now as sunshine then, was just changed to add the fact that agendas for public meetings must be published at least 24 hours advance on the website of the municipality and posted at the municipality's main office building. So Pennsylvania has recognized it because the legislature, let's face it, doesn't do a lot of stuff in a uniform manner. Unity's lacking there. But they have come together to adopt that change. And I think that's something that should help. What Judith mentioned, it's not just information, timely information is really what everyone's looking for. Thank you.
Now we will go on to the questions that have to do with services and taxes. One person has asked, "It's easy to promise to improve or increase services, but how do we do it without increasing taxes?" And the other one has a concern, "How, where can the budget be lowered to stop tax increases?" There is another half of that, and that would be other revenue sources. So taking that whole package together, and this time we start with Mr. Stanko.
Well, I know they say death and taxes can't be rid of. So I have to live with them. In this community, to say we have high taxes, sure. But to say we have one of the best school districts in the entire state of Pennsylvania and probably the eastern seaboard, okay. So you want to lower the taxes, we lower the perspective for what we have in educating our kids. Why are you letting all these people here? Why do people move into Y Missing? Because this is the land of opportunity from a professional perspective, from an educational perspective, and from an athletic perspective. So I made a suggestion to David Brightbill at one time. I said, "Property taxes, you need to get those reduced. And you don't have to go through the whole watermelon. You just have to reduce property taxes for anyone 65 and older." If you've done that, we'd be way ahead of the game right now. And a lot of people that have moved out of this community would not have had to move. That's my thought.
Mr. Page.
Thanks, Judith. Yes, one thing's certain, it's hot button issue, and that's taxes, right? So, I mean, really, we're most, we're most local governments who want to go right away when we're facing potential budget issues is they want to go from the tax issue right away, right? And especially in a situation that we have right now, post-pandemic, so to say, these potential socioeconomic issues that we have kind of collide in here with us with regards to the fact of, you know, potential real estate that we're going to, business real estate that we're going to have in this community, because of the go-to-home type situation, right? It's just one piece of the puzzle with regard to making sure that we really have it tied when balancing our economic development with the needs of our residents moving into these next few years through what's called mindful development, so to say, right? So these are programs that would help attract and retain our businesses. But we can also do that in a way that we don't necessarily have to give up our Y Missing culture and also do that at the expense of things.
And that's, we do have plenty of time. So with our timekeeper, if they're going over a little bit, that is okay. We're good on time. Let's go next.
I think it's always important to align the priorities with the budget. Not everything is going to be done. That's the reality. Some things are not going to be funded. But we have to keep our eye on what is most important and make sure we do those things as effectively and as efficiently as possible. I think the big challenge for the next couple of years is not to get punch drunk on the half a million dollars we're getting through a year from the federal government and not start acting like that this is normal. These are extraordinary opportunities to do things that we have not been able to do. We know that, we know from the federal government that money can be spent on certain kinds of infrastructure. That's not, that's not a question. So we know we can proceed on improving some roads that we have not been able to address before. But we can't get used to that level of funding. We have to keep in mind that in two years, that's going to dry up and we need to live within the old normal, not the new normal. But again, during that time, we need to figure out what our priorities are and make sure that every decision is driven by those priorities.
I do have to make one correction. What Jenna was talking about, the American Rescue Plan funds. I was at a lunch with the state treasurer last Friday. And the regulations have not been decided on that, okay? She did tell me, though, that improving roads will not be part of that money that could be used for. So I just wanted to clarify that. There's a lot, you know, hell, nobody likes taxes to be raised. We don't raise our taxes that much greatly. Over, in the past 10 years, we haven't. And what we do have is a solid balance sheet with usually $4 million in unreserved funds, okay? Money set aside for emergencies that may come up, okay? Economic development plays a major role in this because the more commercial we get, responsible commercial, the less property taxes are going to be. Mayor Levering alluded to that as well. We don't rely strictly on tax money, okay? We know there's a lot of economic development going on in this borough right now. We're not experts on that. So we went out and we hired an expert, okay? We're retaining a lobbyist. And she is in Harrisburg almost weekly, working to get us money. We invested $80,000 in her and we've gotten over $3 million in grants from her, okay? That's responsible financing.
Yeah, nobody wants the taxes raised. And I think the most important way to do that, the easiest way to do that, is to increase our economic development. The borough has done a great job. Michelle Baer has done a fantastic job with increasing the economic developments. Michelle Baer has done a fantastic job with increasing the economic development. What's going on in the knitting mills is really exciting. If you don't know yet, Kimberton Whole Foods is joining us next fall in the knitting mills, which is another really exciting thing. And bringing, keeping that economic development, those businesses, those fresh businesses coming in is what we need to keep our tax stays low. And part of the way we can bring them in is making sure our website is up to date and very enticing for them to want to be why missing. I have something else, and I lost it. Yeah, it's gone. I, the budget has been, they've kept everything in budget. We are not in debt. Our pensions are fully paid, and I have no intention of veering from that, what we've been doing. The, so while you all know if you're interested, I believe our next budget meeting is Thursday morning at 8:00?
Thursday?
Yes, Thursday morning at 8:00 AM, if you're interested in joining the budget meeting. I met John Gallin and talked about the finances, and I believe our finance committee is very knowledgeable, and we're really lucky to have them.
Mr. Noll.
Thank you. The, when you talk about lowering taxes, you're probably also talking about lowering the standard or the quality of the services rendered. And we get a great bang for our buck in this borough. Just a fantastic amount of benefits for the taxes we pay. And we have a pretty good street system, police, all the things that Borough needs to do and keep an eye on. We're either tops or near the top on all of them. So it really becomes a quality of life issue. We're all expecting high-quality services because that's what we've gotten, and we've gotten it at surplus in our budgets. So if we want to start cutting and cutting taxes, you're going to cut services, you're going to cut the quality of the services, and that's not going to be something that the community will readily embrace.
While I have not had the privilege to take up office, considering that, I plan on continuing to contribute to a balanced budget, use resources to ensure that the budget will align with the needs and looking to the future of our community and what will be a logical and useful way of spending. I'm not afraid to admit that since I have not held a position yet that I won't have all financial answers tonight. But what I can say is that I will work to keep a balanced budget and ensuring the budget aligns with the needs of the community while working with transparency. The residents deserve to have access to budgets and financial information on the community sites available to them. And a major part of our focus being able to develop our community and attract people here, but keeping priorities in line for what's necessary for our residents.
Thank you. Audience, if you have other questions, please grab a card and write them down. Looks like we're going to have, you know, time for some more without some. But I'm going to ask, assuming you have all been out campaigning, talking to residents at their front doors, what are the main concerns that you are hearing from residents? We'll start with Mr. Paisley.
Yes. Let's see, where would we begin? First of all, my problem is pretty darn big, right? Folks, I think we all agree with that. But that doesn't mean that we have a challenge, that we don't have a challenge. Some of the current concerns that I'm hearing from our neighbors are stormwater, stormwater management. We have a couple of problem areas, right? So revision or review of our stormwater maintenance procedures and plans and infrastructure is certainly key. The deer, the why missing deer, seems to be on everybody's mind. There's a variety of different steps that we can take there, too, folks. It's all about making sure that we're taking the pulse of the community and really finding out what the crux of the situation is or what the concerns are to our community because it's not necessarily a matter of a number of deer. It's more of how many of those deer are destructive and how are they being destructive? And how can we mitigate it in a variety of either lethal and or non-lethal ways, right? And I think the last thing on the plate there is the Berkshire Mall. What are we going to do with the Berkshire Mall, right? We can follow a couple of different plans. Other communities domestically have also followed. We can literally turn it inside out and create a destination venue with both indoor and outdoor and experiential venues. That could really be something, that could be a destination experience for our families and a real boon to stable off the taxes that we were just talking about recently. So we don't have to go the way of the Amazon fulfillment center. That does not seem to be very popular in the community, so.
A lot of people in my neighborhood are particularly concerned about the trees. You might know the Surlays who live just a couple blocks down from me. They had one tree fall in the car the day before their son went to college. Then about three weeks later, another tree fell in the garage and absolutely ruined two cars. And people across the street feel very vulnerable to the point where a child, when the storm comes, this child is a cradle to the trees, going to fall in her bedroom. So the trees are a real concern for a lot of people. And I think people want to know, what are we doing to get rid of the trees that are dead? What are we doing to plant the right trees so that they won't be so susceptible to winds stirring them up and causing them to fall down? Why are we planting trees under the wires? I mean, how many, how many, how many times you go down a lane and see the trees trying to get between the wires? So that's a combination, that's a safety issue, but people also recognize that makes one of the things, it's one of the reasons why it looks so brittle. So people want to find a way to continue the trees, but to reduce the risk. They want to know, do we need more people in the tree department? Do we need to take some more services in-house and not wait for contractors to cut down the trees? And what are we doing with this? People are also concerned about the office space in the Berkshire Mall, but they want to know, are we going to control what happens to us? Or are we going to wait for somebody to decide? Are we doing enough to do things like see whether we can get housing for people? We need more apartments in this area, but we don't want to increase the stress on the school district. Is there a way to encourage housing there for younger people, for older people? And so people can continue to come in here or remain here. But we want to control that, those situations if that is possible.
I do agree about the deer, the stormwater, and we've addressed a lot of stormwater issues. Let me say one thing, though. The deer are not ours, okay? People say, what are we going to do about the why missing deer? They're not our deer. Technically, they're Pennsylvania's deer. We've talked to the U.S. Department of Agriculture and the state. We're trying to work with them. But personally, to cull the deer, I can't see spending, and the states will charge us $1,000 per deer, okay? They're just going to come back the next year to go out and, you know, kill them, okay? They're just going to come back next year, so I feel that's a waste of taxpayer money, okay? Big pet peeve of mine, Berkshire Mall. I serve on the Economic Development Committee, okay? Mr. Woodward chairs that committee. I'm on a soapbox every month about what's going on with the mall, okay? Now we have a new mall owner. We've met with them a few times. So far, they've been all talk. We don't know what's going to happen there right now, okay? I know what I want to see there. If you go down to Fruitville Pike in Lancaster, okay, to the Belmont, that's a multi-used property. Across from King of Prussia Mall, and they're multi-used property. We have housing there, okay, and a retail center, okay? That's what I want to see at the Berkshire Mall, something that brings revenue. You know, as far as, you know, apartments there, we don't need apartments there, okay? Besides, that all goes to Wilson, okay? So why missing? And the, one quick thing on the trees. Yes, we have issues with trees. We have trees that are 100 years old, okay? We have 8,300 trees, and every tree is inventory. We have an arborist, okay? The trees that you're referring to, yes, they came down in a 60 mile an hour direct wind, okay? Doesn't happen often, okay? They came to us, they told us about the concerns. We heard those concerns. Those trees are being removed as we speak, okay? And the homeowners were notified of such. We do listen, okay? So please, they're not why missing deer. Thank you.
I will say Mr. Jenks does bring up the Berkshire Mall at every economic development meeting, and I do commend him for that because it is, every time I drive out in my neighborhood, I see it, and it is an eyesore. When I talk to friends and neighbors, most of them don't even really know what their concerns are because they have no idea what Borough Council does. But when we get to talking, yes, one big issue is the Berkshire Mall, and another big issue are the trees. We are a 100-year-old community, and as Mr. Jenks said, we have 100-year-old trees. We have a lot of 100-year-old trees. And if we don't, now I'm a word culturist. The last thing I want to do is start cutting down trees. But if we don't start a steady schedule of removing trees that have gotten too large for the area and planting new trees, we are going to be chasing our trails, we're good tails, we're going to be strapped for funds, and we're going to have an entire community full of big trees. We need to do this in stages, and we need to stay ahead of it. We cannot fall behind on it. We have so many trees. We need to consider the trees that we do plant. We have beautiful sycamores, but they are enormous and probably not the best thing to be planting down the narrow streets of Barfield or Cleveland. They're better left for the parklands, for some bigger areas. So we do have to address that situation. And then the trees come with the bad sidewalks. And a lot of people have trouble getting around. My daughters can't ride her bikes on the sidewalks because they're just, they're treacherous. The sidewalks are bad because of the old trees. The Borough has done a great job with the 50-50 sidewalk program. If you're not familiar with it, sign up. They'll come out and inspect your property. We tried to sign up once, we didn't make the cut, and they will cover 50% of the cost of repairing those sidewalks if you get into the program each year. And you cover the other 50% of it. It is your responsibility to pay for those sidewalks, even though the damage is most often borough trees. In the August 16th infrastructure meeting, it was mentioned that the Borough is going to stop the 50-50 sidewalk program after next year, which is something I'm completely against. I believe we need to continue that program. I told my husband as soon as it was said that we need to try to sign up again next year to see if we can get in. But we should be responsible for helping you prepare those sidewalks so that they're safe for the community to walk in. And then the other thing, my issue, is communication. In my own personal life, we had an issue with communication. On Saturday, I was at work, and my husband was getting our daughter ready to go over to Spooky Hollow because she was working the Girl Scout booth. And as you all know, it was raining. The, he went to the website. He does not have social media. He's never had social media. He went to the website to find out if Spooky Hollow was canceled. And all he could find was a PDF of the flyer of Spooky Hollow. No updates, no information. Now, there was an update on Facebook, but he doesn't have Facebook, and I was at work, so he just had to go visit that and show them Spooky Hollow. So communication between Borough and the community, I think, is really important for the community. I don't know if we even realize how lacking the communication is and how much better it can be.
Not to belabor this deer issue, but that is the number one thing that's been mentioned to me, talking to neighbors and friends, about how destructive they are and how something has to be done about them. I'm sure that there's other communities that have suffered or are suffering the same fate, and I'm sure that we could easily put a committee together to study what other communities have done to deal with the deer population in a humane way, something along the lines of some type of birth control or things of that nature, something that would be, you know, something that would be permanent to keep the call to her. My, one of my pet peeves is traffic, and it's on certain roads. I think Stadio Road traffic is absolutely horrible. And I believe somewhere along the line that has to be, if it hasn't been studied, and I have to come up with some solutions. And especially if we're going to develop the Berkshire Mall because you got to remember, how anybody going there? And the traffic still is horrible. Also, the timing of lights. I'm not sure if they have that system in place here, but if anyone comes from east to west on Penn Avenue, you stop right up here, and then you go to the next light, and the next light is all the way backed up, all the way down the hill. They're not coordinated. I'm sure even the city of Reading has some coordinated light traffic signals. So I'm sure we can work on that, too. There's other issues that they mentioned. I echo the sidewalks. My wife fell and hurt herself with some bad sidewalks. That's something that really should be addressed, and I'd have to agree that that 50-50 program, which we utilized, very effective, and I think should remain, or at least should be considered to remain until everybody is incentivized enough to take care of the sidewalks for the people who have sidewalks. Remember, part of Borough doesn't, so.
While speaking to residents, most of their concerns involve effective communication and a lack of awareness and access to public meetings. General safety regarding tree remediation and unsafe sidewalk conditions due to the older treaties, which make it unsafe for disabled residents and elder residents to navigate our area safely. I mean, if it's not broke, don't fix it mentality is irrelevant at this point because what makes, what matters to the community is representation matters. And I think that advocating and representing our community and its needs is a top priority, and no matter how great a community can be, there's always room for progress and improvement and learning together and moving forward.
That is probably a great segue into, well, that's the answer to that question, I guess. As far as infrastructure goes, there's something to be said for waiting until something happens. I can remember back when I was mayor, we got a call from Mackey McDonald at Fair and said, we're leaving town. And then it was like, oh my God, what are you going to do with the thing fair? And there was, there were all kinds of things. We were going to have 100 new homes out there, McMansions, like they have down in Billimelco because the property is so vast. And one after another, they were fielding opportunity after opportunity. We waited, we waited, and this is what we got. Pretty good, huh? We waited for it. We didn't go out there saying, hurry up, build something here because this is an ice war. If that's an ice war, ice war, what's that gas station that they closed 20 years before? The wall was entirely full. Nobody said that. It's a level that patients are trying to treat. So we're trying to make things look really bad because of having an election, but a lot of stuff happens around here. Those two old guys up on that Borough wall, they did things a slow, easy way, hard way, and got things accomplished and did a pretty damn good job making it happen. Taxes, you can't have it both ways, kids. If you want a great school district, you're going to get great school taxes. And I looked at Janet when she talked about school taxes. There probably was the year she was on the school board, that school board taxes didn't go up. So if she's going to be in control of the taxing in the borough, look out because at least we're keeping our taxes where we can here, and we're saying, this is okay. I don't mind paying taxes, and my kids get to go to a really good school, and they do really well. The other thing I'd mention is cost of house. We have to be very careful, and this happens all the time in the planning commission and the other meetings we have. We're very careful that we build stuff that generates revenue because the more stuff we build that doesn't generate revenue and may potentially generate sort of little why missing kids, puts more pressure on the school board. So we need to get that revenue stream out of everything we build, and it takes a while to make it happen. And I don't think there's much that we haven't tried to do fast. But when you said you weren't la la two years ago, you started pumping gas in six months because it was all vacant. You go build it, stand it up, pump gas in your home. Took two years to build that place. So nothing happens fast around here, and there's nothing that really needs to happen fast around here. As I said earlier, we are a great community, and the reason why we are is because we get it. We listen to the radio, and we read the two pages in the newspaper. We have an idea what's going on out there. And we raise our children to be nondiscriminatory, equal opportunity kids. Everybody in this room has that as a focus, and that's why we all get along. We don't have to change this community because there's a lot of stuff going on out there. We're doing a pretty damn good job of making this happen, and we're not doing anything that makes us bad people, and we're trying to. And we're trying to improve the quality of life around here. So sidewalks, you can't win for losing. You've got great trees, we're the city of trees, and we also have crummy sidewalks, and we also have crummy curbs. Now, if you don't have, if you have $4 million in the bank, maybe the new members of council, if it's not me, because I'm not voting for it, let's spend $4 million and fix everybody's sidewalk. Or let's cut down all the trees and put up little ones. I mean, you never know when a tree's going to go, and you hope it's not, that's why you have insurance for starters. But if you want to cut down all the big trees, well, that's going to cost you more than $4 million to start with. So figure out what you want. If you like living here, there's some things you have to put up with, and there's some things you don't. And by the way, if there's something you don't like, walk in the front door of Borough Council, call Steve Brunner back here, he'll take off his mask, you know what it looks like. Call Mr. Jenks here, and tell him what you want to do. The deer, I was in Valley Forest when the deer were down there. There were hundreds of deer down there, and they were trying to figure out how to get rid of deer. Because there were houses all over. But if you want to see deer, there were hundreds, and they had to figure that out. It took years. They used some snipers, they used the birth control method. There's ways to approach that, it's just devoting time and energy. And by the way, these positions are non-paid. And these people work with seven committees, they work with the council meetings, they're out everywhere. So we need to prioritize stuff. If there's a priority people need, I'm sure council will address it. So don't think that...
We do need you to wind up your answer.
So don't think the sky is falling and Rome is burning. It's not, we're in pretty good shape. Think about what you're doing and vote accordingly. Thank you.
We're going to shift to the beautiful parks in Wyomissing. I am a non-resident, but I enjoy walking in Wyomissing Park. And just so you know, I have made a contribution to the Parks Department as a way of paying my family.
Thank you.
But many times when I've been walking, it has been after a storm. And I have seen the massive destruction that occurs along the creek. Now, it is ideal to have a park around the creek because that is the land that can most stand that. But it's the story of today's Freddie Eagle without how expensive repairing streams in Montgomery County was, and even damage to a park, how costly that was to get it back to be the recreational center that it is. And it certainly is a recreational center for this community in Wyomissing. So what can you do to mitigate or defer or somehow impact that vest of severe weather on the Borough and on the Borough's best assets? Are we starting, Mrs. Brunner?
Certainly can't control the water. Hopefully, we can do a better job of planning for when catastrophes occur. It's one of the reasons why, as you just referenced, we're doing a study of the trees. I'm sorry, I'm a tree person tonight. But is there data that shows us that trees of a certain size are more likely to be lifted if the wind didn't fall? If that's so, and if wind is a function of climate change, maybe we would plant different trees. It seems to be at the Stone House that we worked with stewards of the infrastructure and that we should have been planning to replace the bridge and not have that bridge suddenly fail between the parking lot and the Stone House itself. I walk up to the park almost every day, and it's beautiful, but after the water rises, we're helping with the stone and the paths because they're washed away frequently. And then the Borough employees have to spend a lot of time replacing the stone, only to replace it again after the next storm. But hopefully, we can look for solutions to that. I don't know whether it's moving the path back so it's farther away from the water. I don't know what it is, but it's certainly a problem in terms of the solution. What we do repeatedly, I don't think, is solving that problem on more than a temporary basis. But it is a wonderful resource for our community, and we need to use it, steward it.
I'm not very sure where trees come in the stormwater, but okay. This is, it is an unfortunate situation with the stormwater. As Mayor Levering alluded to, we have water coming from Lincoln Park, from Spring Township, okay? Feeding into Wyomissing and ultimately going into Wyomissing Creek and then into Skookaw. Okay? As far as the payers, well, if we get these storms, sure, there's nothing we can do, okay? We're trying to work with the other communities. The Borough is investing, and I want to get this figure correct. On the pollution reduction plan, we're now through 2026, we're spending $800,000, okay? On the municipal separate storm sewer system project, commonly known as MS4. Okay? For, we've made it easier for homeowners, okay? Telling them how much of an imperious area their property can be, okay? We're saying it has to be imperious, so it stays, you know, in the ground at their property and doesn't run off. We want, our main goal is to get zero runoff, okay? Like I said, water does run down the dills. One of the keys, okay, that we are doing, and maybe you've seen these trucks around, and these cables are going down into the sewers, okay? What they're doing is they're televising those pipes, okay? To make sure they're not clogged, okay? That they're open and that there's no rusted-out spots in them, okay? If so, we pull them out, we replace them. The other thing we're doing is our Director of Public Works, he developed a new sewer grate, okay? With a wider throat made out of concrete, and we are now replacing the old ones. So it increases the capacity of how much water can be drained off of the roadways. We've been doing that now for two years, and it's working well, okay? We've eliminated a lot of the flooding areas. We still have areas we have to address, okay? Real quick, and I just wanted to bring up what Mr. Mogul said. In regards to the 50-50 program, first of all, there's, no discussion has been said about, you know, eliminating that program, so I don't know where that came from. But into Mr. Mogul's comment about State Hill Road, yeah, it's a mess. And, but the state is, has already prepared us to plan it. And they are planning within the next two years of coming in and widening State Hill Road. Put in another lane going from Penn Avenue to Collingwood Drive. So hopefully that eliminates some of that congestion in that area.
Thank you, and if we're going to have time, I'm going to ask you to pay attention to the stop.
Just to address Mr. Jenks, I did not say there was actually a discussion about stopping the 50-50 sidewalk program. I said it's mentioned, he bad mentioned it. They had talked about doing it one more year, and that's what I heard, and it stuck very deeply in me because I texted my husband right away in the middle of a meeting and said, "We need to sign up next year again." I never said it was discussed, I hadn't heard anything about it since that meeting, but it was mentioned, and that was something that really stuck with me. In terms of the parklands, yes, there is not much we can do about the change in the storms, the change in the water influx. But what we can do is use the park system and the plants to help kind of hold that water back and to help suck that water up. Our parklands right now have a lot of invasive plants in them. And what I'm proposing costs money, so you know, don't freak out. This isn't a budget discussion, this is that how do we keep the parklands from flooding? And how do we keep them from washing out? Planting native plants, native plants that can hold back soil erosion, native plants, trees, trees to control the watershed. You put a big tree in there, that tree is thirsty. And that tree will suck up the water much more quickly than invasive weeds will. So yes, when that water falls, if we have the proper plantings in our park system, that water can be absorbed much more quickly and create less long-term damage. As for the paths, you know, there are stone paths, they're just going to be washed out. I know, and you might be able to address this, I know there's a big overhaul going with the Stone House and the parklands. Some of those paths are being changed over to paved pathways. So that might be protecting some of the things that are washing away. But really, plants is the answer. If we want to protect our parklands, we make sure our parklands have the right plants in them to protect the environment and bring in wildlife.
Stormwater and flooding in the parkland and other places in the Borough is really a function of two things. One is water coming in, as Mr. Jenks mentioned, water's coming in, flows downhill, and it flows from outside our Borough, over which we have no control. So if that, it's going to be continuing to be a problem until there's some type of regional cooperation, I'd advocate for that. With spring even going up as far as mountain at the headwaters of Wyomissing Creek. That would be one thing. Second thing is stormwater runoff. Stormwater runoff is a contributive factor to flooding. And it can be not just flooding in your basement, but it also controls, or involves, rather, something called inflow and infiltration, where the stormwater gets into the public sewers. This is one thing you want to avoid, and as very costly as it can tax the sewer system. I understand that we are doing, the Borough is doing everything it can to have erosion and sedimentation control plans in place for all projects to minimize, construction projects, to minimize that stormwater runoff. And then the second thing, the third thing is, is that the stormwater runoff has sediment in it. And that gets into the creeks, the Tofahaken and Wyomissing, and we're working to, that's what Jenksy mentioned about MS4, working to reduce sediment in those two creeks. So it takes time, it takes cooperation, it takes money. But you're not going to get rid of storms and flooding overnight.
Since I have lived and been raising Wyomissing, chose to stay and raise my children, I'd say it's no secret that I adore Wyomissing and the parks in the sense of small-town community, the scenery, and access to convenient locations. The great school system is what I love most about the Borough. In addition to Wyomissing having beautiful scenery and parks, there can always be improvements to making our community more convenient for our residents, including adding waste disposals appropriately, handling safety and security of bridges, sidewalks, trees, possibly appointing committees that uphold standards of master gardeners and arborists to keep parks healthy and the wildlife controlled. Integrating more native plants into the parklands and reevaluating some of the native ideas in order to move forward and keep our community safe as well as beautiful.
Should be really short. I would just like to say, we heard Mr. Jenks expand, expound upon the water issues in the Borough. That should give you some idea that the Borough is definitely deeply involved in the problem. It's easy when water comes over from your neighbor's house and he lives on a hill and you live in the valley, that's either a lawsuit or a problem when they first built it, one or the other. But these major climate-driven issues are much bigger, the Borough's on top of those. So I'm not going to bore you with more information about some of the Borough's water problems.
I have faults there. Yeah, I mean, listen, stormwater runoff and the situation we have currently with runoff is, it's a real problem, right? But it's a team effort when it comes to the solution, right? When we think about just the Wyomissing alone, there's eight municipalities that are on the share of the Wyomissing, right? I believe it was back in 2004, they created the Wyomissing Creek Watershed Coalition, right? And that was purposely meant to start to get something in place here where we could get some team effort and control it again, the water that's going to come into our area from our neighboring areas, right? I'm going to talk a little bit about why it's experienced, why it matters in my closing statement. But again, until we figure out the windproof tree or the native plants or any of the other things that we heard here tonight, it seems ridiculous, doesn't it? We're going to go out, we're going to spend all this time and money planting trees and native plants only to not actually solve the problem. And that is solving the water runoff situation that comes into our community. Why are we going to spend all this money and have, create the, plant the windproof tree and all the native plants only to have it washed away because we haven't actually solved it? Here lies the issue of some type of government influence. We need to have the focus to go out and make sure that we're solving the appropriate, the appropriate source of the solution instead of trying to throw money into the situation and trying to fix it. As far as beautification of parks or dealing with cleanup efforts of parks, anybody who has a decent landscape at home, you all know, that doesn't happen, that doesn't happen by itself. It takes part of work, it takes money if you can't do it by yourself, right? If we want to have beautiful parks, there's a reason why golf courses are real beautiful and it costs a lot of money to play with, right? So if we want beautiful parks, we want a beautiful park system, there's going to be some maintenance costs. But that doesn't necessarily mean we can't start looking at things like green infrastructure. I think that's possibly where Mr. Brunner was going to go with things, but there's that much return for that, and that's green infrastructure. And what we do is we start to, it's solve the problem where it starts. So instead of trying to solve water runoff at the end, we had the issue, we're trying to solve water runoff where it starts. And that's through impermeable pavements, green rooftops, and a few other different types of green initiatives that can be very, very cost-effective and effective to a total 300,000 people.
Thank you. We have just, I'm kidding, we have just a few minutes left, so we're going to go to closing statements. Before we do them, I'm going to remind everyone of the two candidates who are not here. But there is information on how you can contact them to ask them your questions. It's vote411.org. And we should have had flyers here, there are other flyers on the table. I apologize that we didn't bring flyers on them, but I will see that the library gets them, and they can be here for when it's convenient for you. But it's an easy-to-find website, vote411.org. And all you do is type in your address, it gives you candidates on your ballot, it gives you information, including how you can contact them personally to ask your questions. Pardon? Yes, we're going to do one minute for the closing question. But I'm going to ask you, I know you have statements planned, but I'm going to ask you also to fit into that what you most would like to accomplish if you're elected for the next four years. So we are starting with Mr. Jenks.
Okay, one thing before I do get my own thing. This would be a disservice if I didn't bring this up and make everyone familiar with it. When the Democrats, WyomissingDemocrats.org for their candidacy in the primary, there was a statement that, to vote no on extending state loans to professional fire companies and rescue squads as extending loans to these groups.
Did we not go into that political stuff and just go to your closing statement?
Well, the question is...
That's inappropriate for this...
Okay, I apologize. Okay, so formally, final. Being born and raised in Wyomissing, my knowledge and expertise of this Borough is quite extensive. I have long been active in our community and have served as a volunteer firefighter for 35 years. Coming up through the ranks from a junior firefighter to being appointed as the Assistant Fire Chief of this Borough. We are a combination department, both volunteer and paid. Currently on council, I serve as the Chairperson of the Fire and Police Committee. During my tenure, I was instrumental in obtaining private funding for license plate readers for our police cars, and most recently, body cameras for all of our police officers. I have also been instrumental with the library, updating personal funding for a long-overdue landscape project, which will be getting underway shortly. As Chairperson of the Refuge and Recycling Committee, we were only the second municipality in Berks County to establish a single-stream recycling program. That includes your plastic shopping bags, all sorts of items that before you just threw in the windshells, okay? in the wind chills, okay? 90% of our recycled material that's picked up in this borough is being recycled. I am proud of the results of our efforts. In fact, unlike most politicians, I am proud to run on my record. My attendance at official borough business meetings evidences that, by attending, oh, in the past four years, 100% of all council meetings. Thank you.
Now, note that our timekeeper needs to shift to the cards. Shift the card a little.
I don't dispute the fact that every single person at this table wants to help the community. We all have the same end goal in mind. We are all here to make a great community better. But this year, you are provided an opportunity that has not been presented to you in a really long time, possibly ever. You have the opportunity of choice. You have four seats available and eight people interested in that position and that should tell you that Wyomissing residents want to have a say. We are here because we want to have a say. I believe it's a great place to live, I believe you think it's a great place to live, that's why we're all here. I commend our council for all the great things they've done, they've done a lot of really good things. But I think it's time for a new perspective and what I would like to bring is a fresh perspective to the table. And I believe I can do that. I just want to quickly address Stanko about me wanting to cut down all the trees. If we put it into perspective real quick, if we cut down 100 trees a year, which sounds pretty intense, that is just over 1%. It would actually take us 80 years to get through all 8,000 trees and replace them. And by then, our trees would be 180 years old and this is an issue that we really need to think about. And I want to also thank Ann, she is recording this evening. I called earlier to make sure that was happening, they're recording our meeting this evening, so please let your neighbors and friends know that this will be available on YouTube hopefully in the next say or two. Thank you all for your time tonight.
I am a beneficiary of living in this great borough for 60-plus years with the parks, the schools, Happy Hollow, the pool, so many great fond memories and I feel a stage in my life that I'd like to give back to the community that's given me so much. And to address the, to Judith's concern about the issue or what's most important to me is not change for change's sake. Change for change's sake is a fool's errand. The most important issue here is to continue and build upon the fine accomplishments that the current Borough Council and prior councils had done to make this community probably one of the finest communities in the Commonwealth. This is due to their strong management, financial management, the fact that there's no debt, fully funded pensions and an eye towards robust economic development and diverse land use, which all benefits, which benefits us all, keeps our tax down and provides for a great community. I thank you for your support and your, for your vote on November 2nd.
Wyomissing is one of the best boroughs to live in, just like every group, community. There is always room for learning and growth. What makes a community great is the willingness to learn and grow with each other and make decisions that will benefit the people who make up that community. Electing leaders that will increase diversity, enhance perspective and hold themselves accountable and work in transparent manners, what myself, Jana, Jen and Katie have to offer and are committed to working closely and effectively with our residents. What I hope to accomplish is advocacy and equality, transparency and diversity with our community representing to the best of my ability and including improved access to communication.
Stanko.
Thank you. I think you asked earlier a question about what's the thing we'd like to see happen the most and I think one thing I'd like to see happen the most is a real rigorous debate between the school district and the community to enhance the ability to have athletic and other use facilities that are dual-use in a cooperative venture. I would say we're not real big on controversy around here. I think the two controversies I remember in the last four years, when the school board decided at some point in time to build a pool, that was like the first shocker around the world and that was the big issue that went around Wyomissing for a year or two and the pool ended up going bye-bye. The next one was the fence. That was one that was a shocker around the world. All the other things that we go through around here, just sort of things that we take and we do and, you know, it's the way we get things done. To say we just need to get new people on Borough Council because the ones that are doing stuff so far are just doing what they've been doing. Well, everybody that likes what's going on here is happy that they're doing what they're doing. So I'm not sure who said anything so earth-shaking that we need to change the direction. I've been on the planning commission for 10 years and I think we've done a pretty good job. I also have a sense of humor. When I was mayor, we had the Movers Commission, so what else? That was a pretty big deal. Then we did something really revolutionary. We called Bank of Fair and we had fireworks in Wyomissing for the first time.
You did get it, I think they were a good stop sign.
All right, okay, thank you. I'd like to be on Pro Council and do more cool things for you. Thanks.
Hi, folks. So I guess I should probably back up a little bit and introduce myself a little bit, I don't think I did quite a great job of that upfront, but. So I have an over 20-year track record as an entrepreneur, a local business owner, bought, sold, managed and rented out commercial real estate, been philanthropist, former financial investor. And I'm also involved in a variety of different types of community charity events, right? Charity organizations to give back to the community. Folks, I'll tell you right now, experience matters, right? If you haven't figured it out already, if you didn't know before you walked in this quarter, Borough Council is a multifaceted job. The folks that are going to elect in this position need to have the experience to be able to really produce positive change in the areas that they're going to affect for the next four years. Without that experience, let's just face the facts, it's on the job training at the expense of the taxpayer. So what I would challenge everybody to do is, when you go home at night, the night before election night, go ahead and think about what type of Wyomissing that you want to wake up in for the next three years and vote Shane White.
I think this forum has been an opportunity for you to see how people interact with each other and for you to do a gut check on how these things ought to work. Do you think that there should be polite discussion? Is it acceptable for one candidate to denigrate the idea of another without giving much thought to it? Do you think that this body should be nonpartisan or do you support someone who brings up politics at every opportunity? You have to make a choice about who's not Borough Council operating. I believe that Jeff LaTorre, Jen Ryaner-Brye demonstrated that we are open to ideas, that we are respectful of other people, we are nonpartisan, we are committed to a balanced budget and I ask that you vote for us and Katie Moore for Borough Council.
Thank you all and thank everyone here for participating tonight. I see it as a very lucky community when you have full slates through street boards and municipal offices. That means you have choices. In many communities in Burkes County, there is no running for seats and how will those counties, how will those areas manage themselves when there's no one interested in even running? Now, I applaud all the candidates for their willingness to take on this mantle of public service and I applaud our audience for being informed voters, for caring enough to come out and listen. Democracy is only strong when we all fulfill the responsibilities of citizenship. Thank you and safe ride home.